Four o'clock in Cupertino, so we'll get started. Following the meeting to order, welcome to the 24th meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. We do not have any minutes to approve, so we'll go right into the requests, calling the agenda item number one. Request number twenty-three dash zero one two zero one from D H S Entertainment.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Koa. On behalf of the licensee, present to my right is owner Mr. Shinji Wapiko. The investigative report, just like to make just a small correction. The tenant will take possession of their premises was changed from December one, twenty twenty-two to January one, twenty twenty-three. And then it's going to expire on December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six instead of January one, twenty twenty-seven. These dates were initially correct when we gave that to Investigator Walker. It's just that the lease had modified and changed because of the delay we pushed down the date. So we provided the revised lease to the commission.
Okay, very good. And can you walk us through your request, please?
And we are, we currently have suite two oh one karaoke room, and we would like to add suite rule five, two oh six and two oh seven. And this is, once it's added, it would be the exact same footprint as a prior licensee.
Thank you. Any questions?
So, let me scroll. I have a couple of questions based off your floor plan. Um, so on exhibit B, your floor plan. The two doors, so you have a door that leads out of your current licensed space that's going to the next licensed space, correct?
That's correct.
And so my question is, is there stairways that are like to the left of that hallway area where you're not going to be licensing? Is there people that are going to be able to come in and out of those stairways? Are those stairways any way that people can get into the licensed area? Or is there a wall there or something?
There's no wall there, but each room is enclosed and then within the rooms have the separate karaoke room. So the alcohol is going to be contained only in the karaoke room itself. So it's contained within a room within a room.
Okay, so basically, uh, walkway in between is for you folks to bring the liquor to the the karaoke rooms or something like that?
Or?
I I'm only concerned, right, that people are gonna could be getting in there. We don't want real people walking within your licensed space. With heroin alcohol in some way, because you know, if someone walks in, you're going to be liable for that space.
Right, so um, the doors are going to be closed if it's not used. So the the all of the room doors will be all closed.
Okay.
And then if the actual red line is just basically so that the alcohol alcohol can move to the room.
Okay. Okay, so in that same area where it says the exit corridor, is there a door that's there or is it just wide open?
On the exit corridor, which
Because as you come down, right, where the stairs on the opposite end, you're gonna, your red line comes out of your two doors from your original um floor plan. Yeah, if there are door, is there something blocking that exit corridor or is it just wide open?
It's a hallway, so it's not blocked. So there's an egress way to get out that way.
Okay.
It must be like a fire. To be able to allow.
Okay, so if the fire door, there's a fire door or something there, or is it just wide? My concern right is I don't want people taking your alcohol out of your karaoke room and then going outside out to that exit corridor.
Oh, yeah, no, they are not allowed to go with the alcohol outside of any of the karaoke rooms.
Okay, my, uh, just so we make sure, I don't make sure someone's at least something watching that space, so people don't take it out. And then obviously, the other question I had is this is a lot, a lot larger space than you originally started with, correct? And, you know, we just want to make sure you guys are gonna have some control of these additional rooms, ensure there's no underage people passing or doing things in there that, you know, drinking.
Yeah, of course. We initially wanted to take the entire space from the beginning, but the prior tenant still had possession of two oh five, two oh six, two oh seven. That's the only reason why we couldn't do it all at once.
Okay.
So they had one um issue with the noise abatement in terms of the hallway and people gathering there. It's, there's sort of
We've only just started operating on Tuesday.
Oh, no, that was just a concern that there would be people um congregating.
Yeah, they're they're not allowed to congregate in the hallway. It's all going to be closed. All the rooms will be closed. And all, everybody would be, whoever's occupying would be only occupied within the karaoke rooms themselves. The hallways just basically for the servers to have access back and forth between them.
We approve request number two, three dash zero one two oh one.
Second, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Their request is approved. Thank you. I'll read request number two. I'm sorry, agenda number two, request number twenty-three dash zero one two seven seven from Wyman Allo Kitchen LLC.
Uh, my name is Catherine Moon, representing Wyman Allo Kitchen, doing business as Club Boy Cafe in Delhi, Wyoming.
Sorry, your last name is Moon? Thank you. Walk us through this request.
Uh, basically, we're just looking to bring in some contemporary wine music on Sunday afternoons from four to six P M. Inside of the restaurant, uh, kind of create a little bit of a nicer environment for the neighborhood to know that we're, we've just started doing dinner service. Um, it's just a two-person duo right now, uh, with one speaker, um, the music cell inside of the restaurant. Uh, yeah, try something new to drum up business.
Okay, and the request is only for Sundays between four and six P M.
Correct.
And is the music, are the musicians facing the street or is it?
They are. The decibels are loud or are quiet, though, because we have all of our dining room tables in there, so we do start dinner service at four o'clock. Um, so it's just for the ability for the guests inside and the three tables on the patio to hear.
I I just would like to be mindful of the neighbors across the street that is a residential area, as I recall.
Yes, it is.
I'm not sure if the noise will travel that far given the street traffic, but again, be mindful.
Definitely.
Thank you. And choose any further questions or pick action?
So looking at your exhibit A, so the licensed area, that also includes the parking lot area?
We won't be having people in the parking lot area.
Okay, well, I'm just looking at your pictures and things. You showed the parking lot. I was like, okay, uh, yeah, got it. Okay, thank you.
In a motion to approve the request?
I move, we approve request number two, three dash zero one two two seven.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, the request is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll read agenda item number three, request number twenty-three dash zero one three three zero from H H Pacific Beach LP.
Chair, I will make a disclosure at this time. Um, that ILWU does represent the employees at Allo Hilani Resort. I am not the employer's direct representative, and this will not affect my ability to be impartial on deciding on this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Christina O'Hira, representing the applicant, and to my right is Chase Su, the F and B manager.
So I know we've had you before, but can you spell your last name for the record?
H E.
What is the request, please?
No problem. Um, so earlier, uh, the commission approved a temporary increase of licensed premises. Um, that was for the Holiday Pop-Up Bar. That's been very popular. And so the concept of having a bar with a theme, um, we think is something that the hotel would like to pursue. Um, I have submitted for a permanent increase in licensed premises, but in the meantime, we'd like to extend the prior approval. Um, I'm hoping that we will have our approval for the permanent increase um in ninety days. So that's why I've just requested an extension through April thirtieth. Um, the next idea is Chase can provide more detail, but the next idea for the concept bar is a tequila educational experience. So I think these, you know, it's not your usual, just like come in, have a seat and drink. I think it'll be an experience and not something that is a little new and it's like, you know, I just think it'd be nicer feeling than just your usual hotel body bar.
Is your experience with the Holiday Pop-Up Bar?
I think the the draw with that holiday pop-up bar was nice. I mean, we had five cocktails. You know, there was some fun we provided, you know, people loved it. They wanted year round, but it's like, I don't know, Christmas a year round is going to be a little tough. I mean, you know, uh, it's good to have like all the things going out for discounts and decorate throughout the year, but we just want to change it up. And then eventually maybe even doing something like a sake theme educational. I mean, it's, you know, everyone's doing the speakeasy, the whiskey, and it's kind of like oversaturated. So we want to try to do something a little different.
So the current request, you're planning a tequila experience, but later when you seek a permanent, you're gonna mix it up with other alcohols?
Well, yeah, like brainstorming, you know, just to see, you know, just to make it fun for, you know, tourists are coming from out of town. It's, it's one of the things where we can kind of promote it within and and give some hotel guests, you know, a different feel of other other places to eat at or dine at and then hang out.
Questions for the applicant commissioners or?
Didn't want to overlap the Cinco de Mayo. It's getting.
So the size of the space, like how much people would you look, I mean, how much people would you look to be able to educate at one time?
You have an idea? About like twelve or less. Yeah, we don't want it too.
Yeah.
Because it's not going to be, you know, we don't want people coming shots.
Right, right, okay. Understand. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioners, if I could just interrupt here, I I we place this on the agenda based upon the date of the submission, which is January sixth, which already has passed. If you would amend uh your approval to accommodate uh the day change to today, basically.
Effective from these day?
Yeah.
And, Susan, any other questions? Uh, entertain a motion to approve agenda item three with an effective date of January.
That's number two, three dash zero one three three zero with an effective date of January twelfth.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. The motion carries. The agenda is approved. The last.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you.
I'll read agenda number four is best number twenty-three dash zero one three three two from T U N H.
Good afternoon. Chair members of the commission, Keith Yute for the licensees. My right is Tiffany Nguyen, N G Y U E N. She is the manager of the licensee. This is a request to break up the fine that was imposed. There were several violations be paid over four months.
Your client is requesting for installment payments.
Yes. Yeah.
So my preference would be to ask you and your client, is there a larger amount you could pay upfront and smaller amount to split for the last three payments?
Like two thousand, maybe, from the initial payment. And then the other three payments would be split equally on the balance.
Choose any other question? Um, let me propose this, Mr. Q Gion, because just to make the math simple. Um, would your client be able to pay two thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars on January seventeen and then three equal payments of six hundred sixty-seven dollars on the following three um months on the fifty?
Yes. She appreciates any accommodation that the commission can do.
And my arithmetic adds up to the total amount of the five.
Could we have this number, uh, two thousand, three hundred and?
Two thousand, three hundred forty-nine. That would come to and payable on January seventeenth. And then three equal, so six hundred sixty-seven dollars each on February fifteen, March fifteen, and April fifteen of this year. Entertain a motion to that effect.
Summer.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. The motion carries with the payment plan that was included in the motion.
Thanks.
First, can I get a um motion on the adoption of decision and order agenda items number five, you could think of, I'm sorry, five to twelve.
Uh, motion for adoption of decision and order for agenda items five to twelve inclusively, second.
There's been a motion and a second. I was in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. The adoption of those decisions and orders are approved. We're gonna move into the adjudication hearings. I'm just gonna ask.
Good afternoon, Thomas Napstiger, Deputy Corporation Counsel on behalf of the city and county of Honolulu.
Thank you. With agenda item thirteen.
You all right, is Mr. Shiro Kobayashi, he's a secretary, he's president with Council Wayne Luke. We have noticed on the hearing, we waive, we waive reading of the uh violation and enter plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, accept the plea. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, the no contest, please accept it.
Mr. Naf, here are recommendations.
This violation occurred on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, when licensee sold liquor acquired from an entity other than a wholesaler. This is licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Still any?
Yes, my client recognizes that uh they made this purchase, purchase of sake shop in Kakao. And they realize it's, it wasn't a wholesaler and that they're not supposed to buy from retail. He understands that.
My motion will be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Walk into Google, recommended fine of five hundred dollars. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. The motion carries. Our team, Fish Honolulu LLC.
Uh, Commissioners, represented, I received an email from Fish's former attorney. Um, he indicated that Fish Honolulu had been dissolved, um, and that he no longer represented them, but he was just letting me know um that they were not going to be here tonight. Um, in that case, we would request a default be entered.
The default's entered. What is your recommendation for penalty?
Uh, this violation occurred on November first, twenty twenty-one, when licensee failed to submit its annual employee listing. Uh, this is a first violation. The recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Just out of an abundance of caution, could we make three calls for the licensing? Three calls are made for the record. Um, Commissioners, step of action. It would be for a default judgment and the amount of two hundred fifty dollars.
Sure. I guess I have a question. With a company that is dissolved.
You may. It may be uncollectible, but the record would reflect that there is outstanding.
Okay, okay. My motion will be for approval of the default judgment for uh of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number fourteen.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Default judgments entered in the amount of two hundred fifty dollars. Well, get onto agenda item fifteen, Asia Kitchen Hawaii. Isaacaya Nalu. Mr. Naf, um, can you let us know if and how service was affected?
Uh, it appears that service was made on Christopher Coty, the manager, on December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two at their place of business. Um, I'll also represent that I called uh the numbers in the file and left a voicemail on January ninth. I have not received any return of calls or voicemails.
What's your pleasure?
Uh, we would request a default at this time.
And what would your recommendation be for the penalty phase?
Uh, this violation occurred on November first, twenty twenty-one, when licensee failed to submit their annual employee listing. This is a first violation. The recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, Commissioners, step of action.
Chen will be to um approve the recommended default judgment on the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number fifteen.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. The motion is approved. And for the record, three calls were made for the licensee. I'll read agenda item sixteen, King Restaurant and Bar LLC.
Let's keep chat.
Yeah.
So I won't fight on. Can we shut down?
I'm trying to see your name again.
Uh, Keo Kei Y O N G. Last name is Chan Six Yen.
Sir, announcing, I mean, can you please read the charge?
Honor about November first, twenty twenty-one, licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person then employed on the licensed premise who is registered with the commission or who is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission in violation of rule three dash eighty-two, that thirty-eight point eight of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Mr. Chen, how would you like to plead, impede, no contest?
Uh, actually, because at that day, we were already closing, because um when we reopen after the pandemic, um, we close at ten o'clock.
Mr. Chen, you first need to enter a plea and Commissioner, other than you, we'll walk you through your options.
So yes, you get either enter a plea of accept the charge, no contest, or or deny the charge.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so you motion, except technically it's admit the charge. Admit the charge, okay. Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the plea. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also would aye, the please accepted.
Mr. Naf, your recommendations?
Uh, again, this violation occurred on November first, twenty twenty-one, when licensee failed to submit its annual employee listing. This is a first violation. The recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
So Mr. Chen, you have the opportunity to explain now. Go ahead. So you can explain like why, why you were unable to send the um list by November first, twenty twenty-one?
Oh, because um when we reopen, so I got relations, you're hearing someone, so I got to then make that view on these because and then for the older, so we got to like, it goes on.
Okay, um, so do you, um, do you remember when you sent it in after November first?
I didn't, I think I would just send it, but it's too get late.
It was late, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Naf, sir, you have anything in the file and rest when the commission did receive it?
I do not believe I have that information here.
Okay.
Can you, your um restaurant was open for business in November of twenty twenty-one? Were you open for business at this time in November of twenty twenty-one?
The one that, yeah.
Mr. Chen, are you current on all of your uh your subsequent filings?
My motion will be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number sixteen.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to issue that recommend. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Also would I, a letter of reprimand would be issued for agenda six.
Yeah, seven.
Seven.
Thank you. I'll read agenda item seventeen, and then King Restaurant and Bar LLC. Could you state your name again for the record, please?
Um, so when the liquor lesson?
I know, yeah, just see your name for the rest.
Oh, okay. The record is sinking, so.
I'm sorry. Tell us your name again, just for the record.
Okay, so my name is Keong Chen, K E Y O N G, last name Chan Six Yen.
Okay.
What about the King Rush on?
Thank you now. Hold on. Mr. Naf, can you read the charge?
Honor about October nineteen, twenty twenty-two, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee's employee, King Yoma was con- uh, whose conduct licensee is strictly accountable for under rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point zero one, subsection A, consumed liquor well on duty on the license premises in violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point zero one, subsection B of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Okay, Mr. Chen, you you need to enter a plea now, either um accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest. Accept the charge. Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, accept the plea. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, please accept it.
Um, Mr. Naf, sir, what is your recommendations?
Again, this violation occurred on October nineteen, twenty twenty-two, when licensees and fully consume liquor on duty. This is a first violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
And Mr. Chen, you have the ability to explain. Yeah, okay. My motion will be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number seventeen.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to prove the fine of five hundred dollars. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Also, but I, the motion is approved, the fine of five hundred dollars will be assessed. Thank you for coming. On agenda item eighteen, Latour Group LLC.
Uh, to the chair, I'd like to make a disclosure that council, and this was here, is also my counsel.
Unfortunately.
Thank you for the disclosure. I confirm this, presiding over this matter will not affect your ability to make a decision impartially.
Yes, you can.
Excellent. But I'm certainly making appearance for you, you and your.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Sorry about that. Good afternoon, staff, and happy holidays and happy new year. Maybe not so happy. Um, this is Ryan Hugh for council for the licensee, and to my right is Travis Enoe, chief operating officer, and that's Enoe, I N O U Y E. Uh, to help expedite things, we will also waive uh reading the charge.
It's like to enter a plea.
So entering a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
There's been a motion and it's in a second to accept the no contest plea. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, the please accept it.
Mr. Naf, sir, what is your recommendations?
This violation occurred on November first, twenty twenty-one, when licensee failed to submit its annual employee listing. This is a first violation. The recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. Hugh, any explanations?
So similar to many of the other businesses that may or may not have appeared today, uh, it was during the height of the pandemic. And I would note that the November first, twenty twenty-one, this business, if I understand correctly, shuttered establishment. And they weren't operating at the time, and it'd probably be more than a month because the Honolulu restrictions were to end or loosen in December first, twenty twenty-one. So at the time, they were not operating.
Yeah.
A couple of rents, uh, I want to clarify, uh, we were operating as a food service establishment, but we were not serving liquor.
Okay.
We were not serving liquor since the pandemic started in March twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you. So, question, do you folks know if, um, again, obviously, we're doing November first, twenty twenty-one, but did you folks turn it in sometime after that?
We've submitted our twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
And that that is the most up to date.
Okay.
So just to add clarification for your question, um, operationally, I believe the point person or the one with institutional knowledge wasn't there or just they were focused on food services and no longer making alcohol sales. So that was why the point struck.
Um, do you know if you received a notice in the mail or an email by the November first, twenty twenty-one one?
Yeah, we we did receive the email. Um, ball was dropped, fell to the cracks. Uh, lesson learned.
My motion will be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number eighteen.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to show that recommend. I was in favor, please say aye. Aye. I also would I, a letter of reprimand would be issued for agenda item eighteen. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners.
I'll read agenda number nineteen, uh, one couple A, Vietnamese cuisine LLC. On the agenda number nineteen, uh, one couple A Vietnamese cuisine LLC.
And the record reflect when this council, to my right is Tu Yet, her first name is Tu Yet. T U Y E T, her last name is Trinh, T R I N H, she is the owner of the premises. And then the record reflect that we have received notice of violation, we reading and enter a plea of no contact.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
There's been a motion and second to accept no contest plea, all those in favor, please say I.
I.
I'll say what I the no contest, please accept.
Mister Anaxia, your recommendations?
This violation occurred on November third, twenty sixteen, when licensee LLC failed to notify the commission of a change in membership. Uh, this is licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Sterling, any comments?
No comment, the accountant failed to. Failed to add, add members to the commission, that's basically the charge.
There, I'm up to date currently.
We are getting up to date, yeah, I just got notice last weekend, we are getting up.
My motion will be to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number nineteen.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item. Say I, I also would I the motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item twenty, P S lounge.
Afternoon. Chair members of the commission, Keith Kiu for the licensee. To my immediate right is Uni O'Neil, last name spelled with apostrophe, N E A L. Behind her is Uni Chung, who will act as an interpreter. C H U N G, if necessary, as to item twenty, waive reading of the charge and our plea of no contest.
Motion to extract the plea.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to accept the no contest plea, always in favor, please say I.
I.
Also would I the please accept it.
Mister Anaxia, your recommendations?
This violation occurred on August second, twenty twenty two, when licensee failed to make time record entries for its employee. Uh, this is a first violation, the recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Mister Key.
This is an employee that simply told the investigator she forgot to check in. She didn't clock in, she didn't clock out, she was in the bar. She clocked in and clocked out the day before, but then clock in and clock out on this date. Uh, she no longer works there, um, Ms. O'Neil has had some problems with retaining employees.
Mister Kea, on the day specified, when she said she didn't clock in or clock out, was she working though?
She was work.
Okay.
She was working, I mean, I, I will, you know. The commission had like a probation matter with Ms. O'Neil. And that's part of the problem she has had in terms of being able to deal with the employees and. Um, Ms. Chung, who I've known for a while because she operated in another bar. Uh, has kindly, you know, communicated with me and we're gonna try to see whether. We can assist Ms. O'Neil and try to rectify that.
Well, we are making sure now, right, that everybody is.
Is, yeah.
Clacking, clacking on, right?
Ms. Chung had suggested I have a conversation with Ms. O'Neil while we finish, which I will.
Okay. Um, my motion is going to be to accept the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number twenty.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for dinner at twenty, all those. Yeah, I also bought I'd motion carries. And feel and agenda item twenty one. P S lounge.
Again, good afternoon, uh, chair members of the commission, Keith Kiu Chi on behalf of the licensee, to my right is Uni O'Neil. Will apostrophe, N E A L behind her is Uni Chung, who would interpret if necessary, we waive reading of the charge and our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
Been a motion and a second to accept the plea, all those in favor, please say. Is accepted.
Mister Anaxia, your recommendations?
This violation occurred on August thirty first, twenty twenty two, when licensee failed to submit its annual employee listing. This is licensee's second violation, recommended fine is three hundred and fifty dollars. The first violation occurred on August fifteen, twenty eighteen, which resulted in a two hundred and fifty dollar fine.
So we checked with the bookkeeper slash accountant, who was charged with the responsibility of doing this, and we got a fax back from her saying. Why submitted it, but the problem is she submitted it on September third, which is three days. Um, part of Ms. O'Neil's problem in getting a bookkeeper, she needs somebody that speaks Korean. Um, the, you know, I do a lot of work with Melrose County, speech or Yamaguchi's office. Except don't have anybody that speaks Korean, so I'm gonna refer her to a Korean speaking accountant, bookkeeper. I mean, she bears, I mean, ultimately it's licensee's responsibility, but that's what happened.
Chin is going to be to recommend a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number twenty one.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second to issue or impose a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item twenty one. Also, would I motion carry?
Uh, and um, Mister Hollinger, just seeing your last question about the entity going out of business. What licensing is very good at doing is if one of the principles of that entity comes back with a violation, it's like. So there is a remedy to people, you know, kind of like absconding and deciding not to do that, and when I have. Clients that come in, I ask about previous licensing and yeah, so it gets, it gets addressed, so.
For sharing that, obviously, we have a younger or newer iteration of the commission. I think we did pretty smooth so far. Um, not gonna wait.
Yeah, thank you.
Then then I'm twenty two, we're play LLC.
Uh, Commissioners, I spoke with the licensee for agenda items twenty two and twenty three, uh, he indicated that he would be off island. And requested that we continue the hearing until February twenty third, uh, twenty twenty three, we have no objections to that.
Um, sorry, let's move agenda of twenty two to February twenty three, twenty twenty two. But then we're gonna call the next agenda item for formality, so following the agenda in twenty three, we're. See. So, master.
Again, Commissioners, um, I spoke with licensee who is currently off island, he requested that this matter be continued until February twenty third, twenty twenty three, uh, we have no objections.
Thank you, Mister, can we also move this matter to February twenty?
You'll do so.
Thank you. In agenda item twenty four, Saiam Guardian Pathy.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, members, I'm, I'm Derek Nakamura, I'm representing Sam Garden. To my right is, is uh, principal, the owner, Dusane Janjan. We already stated that.
Spell her name, please.
Okay.
Spell her name for the record.
Oh, her last name is spelled, D U S A N E E. Yes, the middle name.
Okay, proceed, please.
All right, um, I don't want to waste this board's valuable time, but this can be done very quickly. If um, if the board would consider what I'm trying to say with violation. We're not accepting the actual violation, however, we will, if it's gonna save time. Uh, if I'm allowed to make a short statement, that might, I'll be the need to do anything else in case.
Okay, let me first um, understand, are, is your client denying the charge?
She's denying doing anything wrong, and she says she doesn't believe she violated the law, so yes.
Let me answer the question to the prosecutor, Mister Nasser, did we take a plea on this matter back in February?
Yes, we did, uh, the charge was denied, uh, continued to a contested case. I will represent that, I spoke with Mister Nakamura earlier this week. Um, and they have agreed to stipulate to the admission of the investigator's report, uh, which was bait stamped P zero one through P zero four three. Uh, and the facts contained within there, uh, so we can proceed directly to argument.
Okay, is that? Understanding this, Nakamura?
Yes, we certainly did agree to the entry of the, of the evidence.
Record should reflect that for agenda item twenty four. The prosecution exhibit A, which is investigative report is admitted into evidence. And let me start with Mister Mattinger, what is your pleasure in terms of how you want to proceed?
Uh, we're, we're okay proceeding straight to argument, um, I can give my argument, and then Mister Nakamura can make those, uh, and then I think we can conclude at that point.
Is that a fair process, Mister Nakamura?
Certainly is.
Um, typically, we're at the conclusion of evidence, we would have the prosecution have a right of rebuttal, and I'm only allowing to do that if he so chooses, okay? Any objections to that process?
Uh, we stipulated to the evidence.
No, no, what I'm saying is typically when we have an evidentiary hearing at the close of evidence, the prosecution has a right to rebut and close it. So I'm gonna give him that right and opportunity now. Okay, so you folks ready to proceed?
Yes, we are.
Okay, we'll start with Mister Nester, go ahead.
Uh, so this violation occurred on September twenty nine, twenty twenty one, when licensee violated the COVID orders by having uh, liquor open and readily consumable after ten o'clock. Um, licensee is likely to argue that the COVID order did not apply in this case because it was off duty, uh, employees who were drinking after hours. Um, possibly alcohol that they had supplied themselves. Um, he may argue that the liquor, uh, observed by the investigators was not sold to or purchased by the off-duty employees. Um, and that they just brought it in themselves, however, the emergency order, which uh, licensee's manager admitted to not reading. Uh, it's clear that the liquor was not permitted to be open and readily consumable after ten o'clock PM. Uh, the investigators' report clearly demonstrates that licensee violated the COVID orders by having alcohol out and readily available on the table after ten o'clock. Uh, and therefore this charge must be sustained, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Listen, Nakamura?
Yes, the math, the. Employee, uh, which the prosecutor attorney alluded to was Kion Johnson, she's not here today. The uh, the license, the licensee is, is here today, she knows that they were not supposed to serve alcohol after ten o'clock that day. What happened after that, the restaurant closed. Um, four employees remained to clean the dishes, clean the tables, clean all of the floor, rubbish and everything else. When that was done, they decided to sit down and cooks were very hungry. You might remember this time where all the places were closed after ten o'clock, it was hard to get to anything to eat. So they're sitting down, going to talk about the business, which they did. One of the employees, uh, cook, went out to the car and got a can of Bud Light. This brand is not sold there or anything, he brought it on his own and he began sipping them beer. They were talking about business in a remote area in the restaurant. Uh, prosecutor, I believe, will agree that William Walker's statement is that, yeah, the place was remote. Not visible from outside, uh, by any customer and any, anything like that, so there, when they've. When they were, uh, given the citation, they were, well, kind of. About a buffalo, because they really thought they were complying with the law. And that's the problem I have, I agree with them, but when you read the law, there's no exception for the outside beverage being bought and brought in. It just doesn't seem like the other kind of violation you have. When this rule was put out, where people were selling liquor and making profit. There was no profit motive, nothing like that, there was just one can of Bud Light. And that's why we want to. Ask that you. Be lenient in a proposal if you go against us, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mister Nasser, do you have any argument and rebuttal?
I have uh, two points to make, um. It was not just one can of Bud Light, uh, if you look at the document bait stamped, uh, P zero thirty eight, you will see a photograph depicting a wine bottle, a Bud Light can, and several glasses with uh, dark colored uh, liquid in them. Um, and my second point, as far as uh, whether they thought they were following the law, if you turn to document bait stamped P zero three, uh, the manager, Kion Johnson, uh, admitted that she did not read the COVID order, so they. Uh, did not know what the law was at the time. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Anything further?
That's it.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna allow response, because this, that's our ordinary protocol.
Sure.
Uh, argument by the prosecutor and rebuttal, so at this stage, um. You rest your case.
Yes, we rest.
And Mister Nakamura, do you rest?
Yes, I'd like to add, but yes, I rest our case.
Okay, I understand, um, the commission is now gonna convene into, or we're gonna deliberate on this matter, so we're gonna take a break.
Yes, my motion will be to find the allegations sustained for agenda item number twenty four.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to find allegation sustained, all in favor, PCI.
I.
I.
Also, what I, the allegations are sustained.
Uh, Mr. Knoxing, what are your recommendations?
Again, this violation occurred on September twenty nine, twenty twenty one, when licensee violated COVID orders by having liquor open, uh, readily consumable after ten PM, this is licensing's first violation, the recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
My motion will be to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item twenty four.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to issue letter of reprimand for agenda item twenty four, all those in favor, please say I.
I.
Also, what I, a letter of reprimand with the issue, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Twenty three, twenty five administrators from weekly report, that's right.
Uh, I don't have anything to add from what I circulated earlier today.
Okay.